This conference will now be recorded.
Perfect. So I will call the meeting to order and Phyllis, if you could do our roll call, please.
Counselor Belts.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharma.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
I am here, thank you. And Darren, could you lead us in the flag salute tonight? So if everybody wants to mute, we'll let Darren speak.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For order of business tonight, just to let you all know, we have our regular meeting. We do not have a work session scheduled this evening, partially because we have a few public hearings. And so we want to be sure and take time for those. And then we will have a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency, including an executive session. I'll read the script for that prior to that meeting starting. We do have one change to the agenda this evening. We had on the agenda to work through the stormwater fee resolution. Our Public Works Director is not feeling well today. So the city manager has suggested to him that we will let that table out for tonight and put that on the agenda in December when he can join us. I personally am interested to hear quite a bit more about the additional outreach he's conducted. So I didn't want to have that discussion without him. And we will put that into the next meeting. If we had anyone that wanted to provide public comment on the stormwater utility and the fee structure, we will take those comments tonight, or we'll be able to take those at the December meeting, the first December meeting. Again, if you have public comment, we will limit that public comment to three minutes. There's no one here in the room tonight with us, but if you are on the call and would like to provide public testimony, please open the little chat bubble in the upper right corner and send to Phyllis Bowman your name and the topic on which you would like to speak. Phyllis will then be able to let me know that there is someone waiting. And know that a speaker's comments or take advice will allow time for the council to review the issue. However, we may provide additional information or may ask clarifying questions. And we'll be sure to let us know if you'd like follow up communication. And caller three looks like got off the phone. We had a little background noise there. All right. With that, we will go ahead and start our meeting. Our first item of business is the consent calendar. Tonight, that consists of the minutes of the council meeting of October 2020. And I would entertain either corrections or additions to the minutes or a motion to approve as presented.
I moved to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Silbernagle.
I'll second that.
And thank you, Counselor Carey. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Looks like we got them. Thanks, Phyllis, for those minutes. We have a couple of specialty items tonight. And our first is a proclamation. This was particularly poignant tonight. We have some special things planned from our businesses for Small Business Saturday, November 28. And we want to recognize the value and importance of small businesses in our community. And we want to also talk about all of the special things that the Monmouth Business Association has planned for the holidays. As we know, that will look a little bit different, particularly for our local restaurants that, under the current freeze conditions, are not able to have in-person dining. It's especially important that we patronize them and make plans to provide ourselves, or maybe family or neighbors, with takeout meals during this time. But they will be able to participate in some of these competitions, and certainly our small retail businesses. We hope that folks find a way to shop local. We've done a great job of really having people step up and provide some wonderful shopping experiences here in downtown Monmouth and in our community. And so we'd like to recognize that Saturday. So we all know Black Friday, right? The day after Thanksgiving is the time when a lot of people do their major shopping at major retailers and online. Saturday, November 28, this Small Business Saturday. And we have a lot of resources in our community. Our Chamber and Monmouth Business Association have made some shopping guides available, as well as our Making Spirits Bright Committee. So they've got the annual Griswold Lighting Competition, which is not actually only for businesses, but residents can enter their homes into this lighting competition. And then there's another event that the Arts and Culture Commission would like to bring to your attention, and that is called Artist's Sunday. And that is the Sunday of Thanksgiving weekend. And is a way to promote patronage and gift giving from artists. We are asking local artists here in our community to register. The Arts and Culture Commission and the city will be promoting that. But basically, it asks you to sign up, give your website, or where your wares are available. And encourage folks to consider that as gift giving as well. So as part of that, we would like to proclaim the 2020 holiday season, a shop local season. And we would like to inspire and encourage people to shop local during the 2020 holiday season and support local artists. Whereas the greatness of our community, state, and our country is attributed to freedom of choice and competition, the basic elements of our free enterprise system. And whereas it has been established that small business provides more new jobs than any other sector of the economy. And whereas the small business owners of our community are the risk takers who have invested their knowledge, energy, and personal assets in a variety of independent business careers. And in doing so, they have created employment opportunities for others while reaping the rewards of their independence. And whereas the small business owners of our community work hard in the marketplace to provide quality goods and services. And this in turn evokes the confidence of the consumers who respond in a fashion which keeps the economy healthy and vital. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the people of Monmouth, I, Cecilia Kuntz, Mayor of the City of Monmouth, Oregon, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby recognize November and December as shop local for the holidays months and urge our residents and community members to recognize and comment, commend the efforts of our business community in preserving the freedom initiative and stability of our local economy. And I will sign that. And we will share that proclamation and invite people to really enjoy what we can of this holiday season. And certainly, these are our varied local businesses. So on behalf of all of you, that's what we're doing. We have a presentation tonight, and I see Fred is on the line. Fred is the planner for the City of Independence. And Suzanne, did you have anything to introduce on this, or?
I did not. I think we can just turn it on over to Fred.
All right. We will turn it on over to Fred. Hi, Fred.
Hi there. Very nice to be here tonight. I know some of you folks, others, I don't know, but it's very nice to meet you. I am here to present tonight on a project that we're sort of working on together. Us over here in Independence and you folks over in Monmouth. In fact, Councilmember Belts is very familiar with this project, as she was one of the ones that originally spearheaded the idea. Basically, this project is looking at the feasibility of improving transit options and potentially creating a trolley between Monmouth and Independence. Basically, there was a group of folks that were studying the issue for a while, kind of conceiving, how could you promote economic development, improve transit, improve place making, all of these sort of things together. And they came up with the idea of a trolley running between both Monmouth and Independence. And so the idea was compelling enough that the state legislature provided some funding for the idea. And we are trying to take the ball and run with it. That's basically the gist of it. We see that their original vision to do things like celebrate the history of Monmouth and Independence, enhance the economic vitality of the communities, and move people efficiently, it's compelling, right? It makes a whole lot of sense. And so that's what we're trying to do. So right now, the City of Independence is acting as sort of the fiscal agent for this project. We're trying to work with you folks the best that we possibly can. We're trying to get outreach out. We're running a survey right now. We've got a steering committee for the group, really trying to look at this issue in greater detail. We have people from Monmouth City Council. We have people from Independent City Council. We have downtown businesses. We have industry. We have low-income service providers that we've talked to. We have the hotel over here in Independence. We have the university. We're trying to get everybody sort of at the table and saying, how could this work? What might the service look like? Does this make sense? So really, that's what we're trying to do. Like I mentioned, we do have a survey running right now. And if you haven't taken the survey, I would invite you to at Survey Monkey. And then you could type, you could Google Survey Monkey, and then Monmouth Independence Transit Project. And it should pop, it should pop right up. Also, it is in your packet, the exact link, so you could go to it through there. If you haven't taken the survey, take it. You have the chance of winning one of four $25 gift cards. Right now, we already, we've had something like over 800 responses. I'll say that those tend to skew a little younger in age demographics. So we'd like to round out our age distribution. So if you know people who haven't taken it, share the link with them, all of that sort of stuff. Basically, we think it's a really neat idea. We're trying to figure out how to make it work. And yeah, if we could get your help getting the word out, we would sure appreciate it. Now, I think that's basically what I have to say. Basically, what we're trying to do with this project is we have this vision of a trolley, right? We're going to try and make the trolley work. But we're not just sort of saying, this is the only way that it's going to happen. Because we feel like if we just look at one option, perhaps we'll miss something that's compelling or that we weren't thinking about that actually fits the community better. So we are literally like searching every alternative. We have a great consultant on this project, Walker Consultants, who eat, sleep, and drink transit and transportation. I mean, they are really, they're a really amazing consultant. So it's really neat working with them. And they are really sort of pushing us to kind of think outside the box, to explore different alternatives, things like different routes and all that sort of stuff. So it's really, it's really an interesting project. And yeah, if you could help spread the word about the survey, that'd be great. If you could take it yourselves, you might have a chance to win 25 bucks. So basically, that's what I have for you tonight. Are there any questions about the project or anything else? Yes.
Counselor Belts.
Well, it's not so much a question, but I would be remiss if I did not recognize Counselor Sharma, who really was the very first person that came up with this idea. And she actually approached me even before I was on City Council, because she knew I worked for chariots, and she knew I loved the community. So she really was the one that started this idea and started the trolley wheels rolling. So I just would be remiss if I didn't recognize her contribution to this.
That's great. Thanks.
It actually was Representative Paul Evans, who approached me and said that the state would like to get behind this. And we took off from there. And we couldn't have done nearly as much as we've done without Counselor Belts, because she's sort of the brains of the outfit, of the transportation outfit.
Counselor Carey.
Good evening, Fred. The only question I have is, what is your timeline? What's sort of, where are we? I know you've got the survey data that you're collecting. You've got your steering group together. What's our timeline? And you know, what's our forward path on this?
Basically, what our consultant for the project has a pretty quick timeline that they're thinking about. Originally, I was hearing them mention something about December. They're not going to make it by December. I haven't heard a revised timeline, but essentially what they're planning on doing is is they're planning on getting this information back. They're really trying to look at different routing options, like how could this service work? And then they're looking at various financing options. From that, they're going to come together and they're going to put all of that in sort of a feasibility study that they're going to give to the communities. I would anticipate that that might hit the communities, maybe sometime in February or something like that.
Great.
Obviously, we had something live by the spring. And that could be too aggressive, but it would be awesome if it could happen. Thank you.
And Counselor Schinkel.
With chariot running this route, basically, what is this going to add that we don't already have, besides the cuteness of a trolley?
That's a great question. And that's, that's one of the things that we're actually looking about, looking at, is how does chariots serve the community right now? And we're asking that specific question. What does, how is it different than chariots? How can it build on chariots? Because we, or we're even asking the question, how could chariots better serve the communities? So when I say, when I say we're taking a holistic approach at this, I mean, really, our consultants sort of started taking that path. And now I've just sort of encouraged them more and more, like, how can we do transit better in these communities? How can we get people around better in these communities? And really trying to sort of push the envelope with it. So that's really what we're, what we're looking at. The, I mean, so there's various types of different systems. They have prepared sort of an initial report on the various types of systems that could operate. And one of the things that they pulled out was a situation that's very similar to sort of the geography here. It's between Gig Harbor and Pierce Transit. And so Gig Harbor up in Washington sort of runs a trolley to serve that community. It's really part of the Pierce County Transit System. It's operated by them and everything, but they're running a trolley. And the service level that's provided is sort of supported by local businesses and whatnot. They've sort of ponied into that larger system. So that's just one of the many different options that they're considering. There's various funding models for these, and a lot of them, they don't look like a typical transit funding model. So like I say, we are literally turning over every stone to consider how this might work.
And then, thanks.
If I could, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Byron. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Roxanne. So in that thing, I didn't see any information. And last time, we talked about this in depth with Mr. Evans in the room. They were doing a feasibility study, and I didn't see anything about a demand. And then secondly, it's one thing to, for people to say, yeah, I'd like this. But then it's another thing for them to actually get on it and write it. And so at what point are we going to see some data that would drive such a decision to go forward with this before we pour too much money and resources into it?
Right. So that's really what this feasibility study is trying to get at, is what is the demand of the service? Is it feasible to run this? I mean, that's really the fundamental question that we're looking at. And, and you know, the answer might be no for some types of service, but it might be yes for a different type of service, if that makes sense.
So one of the challenges that we face with chariots, and since I work there, I can say this, is that we just don't have enough service for people to feel, A, they can depend on it, and B, they can use it on a consistent basis. It's really focused on commuters. The intention of what chariots is running right now is to get people to and from Salem, to and from Dallas. And yes, we will be implementing the 45, which will probably be either November or January. And that's more of a, what's called deviated fixed route, where the people will be able to ride it from stop to stop. However, that serves Monmouth Independence and Dallas. And just to get to Dallas from Monmouth would take well over an hour. The idea of this is we need something that people can hop on, hop off, get from the university down to the hotel and back again in a reasonable length of time. Now, people have already said they want it to run 24/7, 365 days a year, every 15 minutes. We know that's not feasible, but we do know that there's something between what we get now and what people want. And can we fill that gap? And so that's kind of the goal of this right now. And you know, Byron, we have a very independent spirit here in Monmouth and Independence. It'd be really nice if we had something that was ours. You know, if it was something that we had more of a say-so in. And transit has lots of rules and regulations that they have to follow. Like, they can't charter. We cannot charter a chariot's bus to do anything. But if we managed a trolley system or any kind of transit system internally, we can then use it for what we need to use it for, moving people back and forth to Fourth of July, those kinds of things. So there's, those are the sides of things that we're looking at with this.
Yes, I do think that there's a level of possibilities here that when we, when we think of specifically city transit service, that most of us sort of picture when we think about a bus, there's a whole range of options beyond that that I wasn't exposed to. And I actually have redesigned a transit system, you know? So it's like, there's just a whole range of options out there that I wasn't even expecting. So, so yeah.
Yeah, interesting concept. John? Did you have something?
Only that, that, you know, one of the things that may or may not show up in the survey is, you know, with our new downtown development that we've got going, the Monmouth Commons. Recall that they're going to be trying to attract, hoping against hope, I'm afraid, but people that don't have vehicles. There's no parking available for the vehicles, and that's something we're going to have to deal with. But if there is easy transportation to Independence, to the grocery store, to, you know, entertainment options, either in town or in Independence, it might lead into that, you know, that Main Street concept, that downtown district concept that we've got going. And, you know, we're kind of at the cusp and have that lager heads between rural and urban, you know? And I think that's what you're going to find out in the survey, is whether or not this rural community is ready for what is typically thought of as more of an urban service. Hopefully, but you don't know.
Yeah, I think it's interesting. You know, I'm just, I'm surprised all the time about folks who ask about, you know, what do people do to get around in town? They understand about chariots, but ask for others, would like other services. As we try to attract more medical services here in town, as we get more shopping and things, if there's actually some folks who don't drive. And even though it's a good brisk walk in the rain, it's nice to have another option. So yeah, I think it'll be an interesting project to go forward. And certainly, nothing we are committing huge dollars to at this time. Appreciate the update, Fred. Appreciate you taking that on. I know, I know, getting one more thing to staff is never fun, but didn't realize you had some expertise in this area. I'm excited to have you on the project.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I like, I like transportation, so it's good. My joke about transportation is it moves people. So, all right. It's pretty bad. I apologize. All right. Anyways, you folks, take care. Thanks a lot for having me.
Appreciate it. All right. That takes us to my mayor's report, because we do have a lot of business before us. I'll keep it brief. I do want to say, if those of you who do not follow the coronavirus news, especially in Polk County, in great detail, I do. We had last week, the Central School District opened up for the first time since March. We actually had students in one of our buildings. They were students who had not had any internet access and therefore were really limited in how they were accessing education. We were able to bring them in under the state metrics. And it was just really satisfying to our teachers, to our principals, to actually have kids there learning. We did that on Thursday, and we did that on Friday. And Saturday, we had to shut it down. The case rate in Polk County is measured in a rolling two-week period for school metrics. And we went from 84 cases per 100,000 in Polk County, basically three weeks ago, to 233 cases this week. So Polk County Health said, even though we had tremendous protocols in place, it was very difficult for them to recommend that we continue bringing kids in. The community spread, the amount of cases that cannot be traced to a known case has increased to almost a third of the cases in Polk County this last week, according to the Polk County Newsletter. So there are known outbreaks related to employers, related to congregate care, and actually related to... actually related to students at the high school in this community. And therefore, things are, this freeze is very serious. It's devastating, but I don't know what else we can do. It is dangerous. I got an email today from the Salem Health Governmental Affairs Director, letting us know that, right now, Salem Health is not limiting elective surgeries and procedures. They are not facing an insurmountable surge of cases, but they do currently have 40 COVID patients. Their peak in the spring was 27. But Portland hospitals are beginning to face staff shortages, as well as constricting their capacity to allow for ICU cases and COVID cases. And Salem is obviously sort of the backup to Portland. So, this is a very serious situation. We are not in a position yet to be fearful. But as this Governmental Affairs Director pointed out, they meet three times a week, and Salem Health itself has cut back to no more than four staff people in a meeting together. Masks are required at all times. They have no known cases of transmission between patient and staff, but they're, earlier in the year, Salem Health did have an outbreak among staff. So, we know, some people are being very cautious and others aren't. And you don't know how this spread is occurring. We have a staff person at the school district who is uber careful and has tested positive without any known contact. So, kids are out of school again. Kids are struggling again, and we know it's difficult. I don't know how we'll get them back into school between now and the end of this year. So, that's kind of where my head has been lately, and the seriousness of this, I just can't impress enough. So, I will take reports from council representatives on boards and commissions, if we have anything. Anybody has had any of those meetings? Roxanne?
Roxanne, do you? Oh, I'm frozen. Yes, I have a library report. So, the library board was supposed to meet November the 11th, but that was a holiday, so they met on the 13th. I had a power outage, so I was not able to participate. However, I got the meeting minutes. The gist of it is, there are some programs that the library had been doing that weren't well-attended, so they're going to be cutting those out. There's other programs that were very well-attended, and they're going to keep doing those. They're going to be trying something called a book bundle, which is where you will be able to call up the library. You kind of, they do a quick little interview of you, find out what you like, and then they'll bundle a couple of books together, and then let you know when you can come pick them up. So, kind of like having a personal shopper at the library. And I think that's about it. Thanks.
Hi, John. Counselor Carey?
The Planning Commission's been very busy. I have not attended, because the product of their work has arrived on our agenda tonight. And so, I only report that so you don't think I was slacking off.
All right. We will take that. We know you get more than your share of extra board and commission meetings, Counselor Carey. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, and I do want to let you know, we did receive another application for someone who is interested in the Planning Commission and/or Budget Committee. And City Manager Wine and I have kind of started roughly talking about a process to recruit folks for those boards, since we do have some openings. And hopefully, we'll kind of run a process by you, get some feedback, and see if we can do some recruiting and plan a process whereby we would give folks a chance to maybe interview. Would be lovely to have way more candidates for those positions than openings for all of our boards and commissions. And at the December meeting, Phyllis will have a report for us about where all those stand. So, we will do that coming up. And speaking of our city manager, our first city manager report from Marty Wine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Good evening. I'm very happy to be here. I'm going to also try to keep my comments brief, but unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, actually fortunately, in my first couple of weeks on the job, I have been very fortunate to be working with a great team of folks at the city who have given me lots to report about. So, I'll try to keep this brief, but I'm going to also try, I think you've noticed that on Fridays, I'm going to repeat the tradition of prior city managers and send you notes about the happenings that have been underway in the city. And hopefully, I'll change this report, so it's more of a look ahead. In these last couple of weeks, I've spent my time getting up to speed, especially on major projects, including the City Hall project, and developing a project plan and schedule for the coming year. And I'll say more about that in just a moment. Getting up to speed on urban renewal agency projects, including Monmouth Commons and the Oddfellows Development Proposal, and also putting together a capital improvement program and making sure that it can get off the ground. I've been trying to meet with everyone on the council, including incoming, outgoing, and continuing, so I can understand your priorities and issues in the community. I'm hoping that new counselor orientation can get beyond the planning stage and scheduled in December. And you'll see in your council packet that our city recorder has put an announcement for elected essentials in there. I envision the effort for new counselor orientation to be in three parts. One, joint training with newly elected officials, and that'll be together jointly with the City of Independence. Then the selected essentials class that's put on by League of Oregon Cities that's coming up. I think it's scheduled for December 3rd, and we can help you get signed up for that. And then, meetings, individual meetings about specifics about the city of Monmouth. So, I'm excited to be, will be welcoming new folks to council. And I also want to say to the folks who are going to be stepping away from council, I'm sorry that we won't be working together for more than just the meetings that we're meeting at here, but I know that we'll have opportunities to keep working together, even though it's not in the course of your council service. Looking ahead to future council agendas, here's a preview of upcoming meetings. In December, we hope to bring you a draft of a ballot title and resolution to refer the question of funding a city hall to our voters. And so, we'll be consulting with bond council and our council to bring you a draft of that. You'll see a briefing, you just heard a briefing about what is going on at the library in the sense of one service. But we've asked our library director to come and talk with you about how we are operating during COVID. Let's see. And then, in January, in addition to panelling new councillors, we also hope to bring back to you a discussion about climate change and climate action. And you heard from the task force last month about their wish to see a resolution and hear about ways that we can change our city services to incorporate the ideas of climate change into everything we do. I want the council to know that I'm in discussions with Chief Talan about transition and timing for leadership change in the police department, and I hope to share more with you soon. And the chief and I will announce together what the next steps will look like. And then, a couple of notes from Public Works and Community Development. We've had our water master plan approved by the Oregon Health Authority, which is great news, and that means that we'll take the next step to put together a system development charge methodology with the new capital program list, capital project list, pardon me. Also, the city applied for and was awarded a small planning grant for safe routes to schools. That's also really exciting, and we'll be working with ODOT and also Altam Planning for a planning assistance cycle. And the whole purpose of that is to use the process to position us for better grants for projects or future grants for projects. I think we have in mind crossings at Church Street and Highway 90 and 9W, and also Hafley and Main Street sidewalk and ADA ramp improvements. Let's see. The latest news, which most of you know about, is that we had a windstorm last night, and that brought down some large branches. So, there we had a large branch in Main Street Park that narrowly missed hitting our restroom building, and crews are also adjusting some of the lighting that was disturbed by the wind. And Friday's winds also brought down a large branch in Gentle Woods Park. So, our public works folks have been very busy. And then, finally, for public works, the second round of leaf pickup is in process, and our public works director reports that all's going pretty well. This is one of the primary services that Stormwater Utility is providing to residents. So, you know, this is my chance to remind you, even though we're not going to take it up tonight on the agenda, that one of the reasons we created the Stormwater Utility and are considering a fee to maintain the service is for the kinds of services like the leaf pickup and catch base and cleaning that we do. On the community development front, I'm happy to report that we received applications for the COVID Business Grant Program, Assistance Grant Program, that's being administered by Willamette Horse Partnership. And today, we hear that it's likely we'll be able to fund the 24 eligible businesses that applied for the COVID Business Grant Funds. So, local business owners have really been appreciative of this program, and it will provide assistance in the upcoming winter months to those businesses.
And more to come.
Yes, and more to come. 10 businesses have signed up for the Business Technical Assistance Program that was offered to Monmouth and Independence businesses through Indy Idea Hub, and located it in Indy Commons. Thanks. And businesses are going to be able to take advantage of consulting services to help them with web design, social media, and online sales. And then, finally, Governor Brown is requiring a freeze on many activities for all Oregonians. I think that's the news that we've all been adapting to and kind of trying to make sense of in the past few days. While we hear it's to be for two weeks through December 2nd, it is going to be extended, it's likely to be extended beyond that timeframe. So, just to let folks know that the City of Monmouth will be closing our buildings to public walk-in visitors starting tomorrow, Wednesday, November 18th, through the time of the freeze, December 2nd. City staff will continue to be available by phone and email and by appointment as needed. And we're committed to doing our part of reducing the spread of COVID-19, and we're going to continue to follow the OHA Public Health Guidance on wearing face coverings, practicing physical distancing, and encouraging all of us to work from home where that's possible. So, and then, as the mayor was just mentioning, there's one final announcement we got this afternoon. Governor Brown has announced $55 million in financial assistance to support Oregon businesses. So, in concert with the freeze that was announced, the state is going to be committing the basically remainder of its coronavirus relief funds to support the businesses who will be most financially impacted by the freeze, including small businesses, women, Black Indigenous people of color, and tribal-owned businesses. So, that's, I think, you know, some effort to help during a time when, as has already been mentioned, our small business community is really going to be impacted. So, that's all I have for tonight's report, and I'm happy to be here, and thank you for everybody's kind welcome and support in these last couple of weeks.
Yeah, our Power and Light and Public Works guys have been working overtime. Some of us in town had a power outage a week, a couple weeks ago, and they worked through the night and got us back up and online right before time for online school to start that morning. So, that was great. Now, obviously, this morning, we've got a bunch of, another opportunity for everyone to get out there and deal with the rain and the wind. So, winter is here. Thank you, Marty. This is the time we have for, oh, John, Carey, did you have a question for Marty?
Just very quickly, you talk about the 24 COVID Assistance Grants. Is there any way we could get some, like, narrative on what those look like? You know, what kind of funding, kind of service, what they provide? Personally, I'm out trying to talk to business owners and restaurateurs in particular, and would kind of like to know what has been available to them. And not that they need to chase it, but there may be some new dollars coming. So, not only outreach, but also an idea of what's happened behind. Thank you.
You can do that. Thanks.
Yes, we'll prepare that. Great question. All right. Do we have any citizen comments, Phyllis?
I have not received any, Mayor Coons.
Okay, thank you. We do have some comments regarding the hearings coming up, but as far as general public comments, still no one here in the room. So, we will move on to our business agenda. Our first item is a public hearing. It is a legislative amendment, and regarding the floodplain zone update, there was voluminous material in your packet on this issue, but we will let Suzanne Duffner give us her staff report on this.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of the council and visitors on the call, on the video. I'm here to give the presentation for the staff report for legislative amendment 20-02. And these are pertaining to updates to the city's floodplain zone found in the Monmouth City Code. So, these decisions to amend the city code are legislative in nature, meaning it's a decision that applies broadly to the communities, and in this case, properties that are located in the flood hazard zone. Council makes the final decision, and that decision's made by adopting an ordinance. So, we do have a public hearing scheduled for this tonight. The Planning Commission has already held one public hearing on this at their October meeting. I'll be presenting their recommendation to you later in the staff reports. But just kind of give you some background information on the proposed amendments before you tonight. The city does participate in FEMA's, so the Flood Emergency, Federal Emergency Management Agency Flood Insurance Program. And in order to be eligible for that flood insurance program, the cities do need to have adopted flood hazard regulations in place. By having these ordinances in place, it helps protect property life and any further damages in the flood hazard ordinances. So, it's pretty important that we have these flood protection ordinances in place. It also allows property owners that reside or own property in the floodplain to purchase flood insurance at more affordable levels. So, big incentive that most communities that have floodplains choose to participate in this program. So, periodically, FEMA conducts community assistance visits to check in on communities and make sure that they are abiding by the flood hazard ordinance requirements, administering the program correctly, and that their flood ordinance is up to date. In Oregon, they delegate that authority to the Department of Land Conservation Development. So, we did have a visit, the City of Monmouth, back in March this year. And there's a copy of the letter from, that summarizes the visit and the things that DLCD found during that visit. And one of the items that they identified is this need to update Monmouth's flood hazard ordinance. And I believe cities of Independence and Dallas are also going through a similar process in this right now. So, it's pretty customary. FEMA makes updates or changes to the model flood hazard ordinance that cities are required to adopt, and cities in turn need to get in there every so often and make adjustments to their ordinances. So, that's kind of why we're at where we're at. So, fortunately, in terms of City of Monmouth, we don't have a lot of properties or development that are in the floodplain. Properties that we do have in the North Fork, Middle Fork, and South Forks of Ash Creek are most, a lot of that is publicly owned property or properties that have not developed or in a conservation easement. or in a conservation easement that protects them from development. So when FEMA, or when they came for this visit to look at our floodplain files, I think we had one permit on file for the last five years to be able to to share with them. So it's a good thing, you know, not to have a lot of development impacting in the in the flood hazard areas. But as I mentioned, this was needing to update our ordinance was one of the things they identified. They did a comprehensive review of our ordinance telling us specifically what items need to be updated. And there are a number of changes. The last time we updated, the City of Monmouth updated our code for the flood hazard ordinance was in 2006. So since then, FEMA has taken a lot of their more technical rules that were historically found in supporting bulletins and documents that they referenced that pulled those into the actual ordinance to try to make them a little easier to find and administer. So you'll see a number of sections that have been expanded to pull that information in as well as to clarify any ambiguous terminology or procedures that may have come up as issues in the past. So these are really the minimum standards that the city needs to have in place to be eligible for participation in flood insurance program. We can't relax them any further. We could potentially make them more stringent. But we really don't have a lot of flexibility in what's these rules, what these regulations say. So so unlike some ordinances, like for example, our short-term rental ordinance, we had a lot more flexibility and creativity to look at different examples and how we wanted to customize that. Here, we we do not have that that latitude. They get very specific on the wording. So both Planning Commission and the City Attorney have had a chance to review it and provide their comments, received a lot of good feedback to clarify the typeles and the items that didn't make sense. The Planning Commission, after they held their public hearing in October, did recommend that the council adopt the proposed amendments to the flood hazard ordinance. We are on a timeline to get these adopted in order to stay eligible flood for the flood insurance program. So in the letter, it mentioned an October deadline. Obviously, we've gone past that. I have worked with the LCD on an extension to that. So we're still within our window of getting these adopted. They understood that communities are struggling with a number of issues. 2020 has brought challenges. So so we were still in in good shape, but we do need to be responsive and timely in getting these completed and adopted. So with that, there is a recommendation and a sample motion in your staff report when you're ready for them. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can about it.
Madam Mayor?
I didn't open the hearing. Is that what you're going to tell me?
No, 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 I just, I wanted just to comment, follow up on some things.
Oh, good.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine. Just it's underscore what Suzanne said. Those of you who are careful readers of our code might recognize that this is a different voice than the rest of the code. It really is different language. It's a different style. And that is because FEMA is really very prescriptive in terms of of this code. It doesn't speak well to the rest of our code, but it does speak well with higher level FEMA regulations. And so this language ties in with with other language that you would find in FEMA regulations that we are implementing. And so it is important, and we've surrendered some of our pride of authorship here in order to stay consistent with FEMA style and consistent with other provisions of FEMA regulations. So those of you who looked at this and thought, this doesn't sound like our code, you're perfectly accurate in noticing that. But it's intentional in that we are purposely staying consistent with the FEMA style manual because that way we will stay closer to their regulations above us.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Especially the changes, noting noticing the markouts and the markups and things. It did look quite different. So. Any other questions or comments about the content? All right, seeing none then, and having no public comment on this issue. I would entertain one of the alternatives and the proposed motion for one of them is included in our packet.
Is this first a hearing?
It is a hearing. We don't have anyone to provide comment. That's why you have a hearing in case people want to make comment, but we don't have anyone.
But I, fine. I mean, I just wondered if we needed to close even though there was no one there and then move on.
I didn't really open it. So yes, the hearing is closed. The the record is complete. Thank you, John. We get this stuff all the time. The rest of us don't do hearings as much.
Are you ready for a motion?
Please, Counselor Sharmer.
I move to approve Legislative Amendment 20-02 and direct staff to prepare an ordinance to adopt the proposed amendment.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just worry a little bit. I think the minutes should reflect that a public hearing was opened and then closed. I think that language in the minutes would be important. DLCD will be looking at this and they'll want to know that a public hearing was held. We know there's no one here, so it should be a very short hearing. But I think to have that in the minutes before we move to the motion would would be in order.
Perfect. Thank you. So was, we gave a staff report. We had no public comments. We had no council questions or comments. We closed the hearing.
And. Open the hearing. That's my question.
I did. I, well, I said.
You're fine. I'm sorry.
I did that when you were speaking to me because I realized I let Suzanne start before.
Okay, very good.
So then I closed it. Counselor Sharmer moved and Counselor Lopez seconded the motion. So I will take a roll call, please. Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously and we will have a ordinance at our next meeting, I believe.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for getting that extension. So we were all legal. Our next item is a public hearing on an annexation. And so in this case, because it is a land use issue, I'm going to follow the particular process here. And I will declare this hearing open and again, ask for the staff report that you have in your packet.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. So unlike our last public hearing that was a legislative decision, this public hearing has a quasi judicial component to the annexation request tonight. So this is going to be a decision that applies to a specific piece of property. So different procedure, I need to read a public hearing statement and then I'll ask, I'll call for the question on whether or not there are any declarations on reasons why a counselor should not participate in the in the decision. So bear with me as I go ahead and read the public hearing statement. The public hearing before the Monmouth City Council is now open. I need to ask, are there any declarations of any conflict of interest, bias or expertise contacts, contacts that occurred about this application outside of this public meeting? So any members of the city council have any of those declarations to make on this land use matter? Seeing none, Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. The applicable substantive criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the staff reports and are summarized in the staff presentation. All testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the Monmouth Comprehensive Plan or zoning ordinance which you believe applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city and the parties to this hearing an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of issues based on that issue. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land use board of appeals shall be raised no later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing on the proposal before the city. Such issues shall be raised with and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city and the parties to this hearing an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval without sufficient specificity to allow the city or state to need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Okay, so first, the application will proceed with the staff report. Next, the applicant presents their case. Those who speak next are those in supportive of the application, followed by anybody that's opposed to the application and then those who are neither for or against the application. Public agencies are also allowed to comment. And we just asked that anyone that speaks before the city council to please state your name and address for the record so we can make sure that you have, you receive a copy of the decision. So basically what I just read, if there are issues that may be the basis of an appeal on this land use issue, they need to be raised before the hearing is closed this evening. So. All right. Well, with that, I'll give a brief staff report. So as mentioned, this is a request for an annexation, case number 20-01. The proposal is to annex approximately 43.45 acres inside the city for the purpose of development of a future single-family residential subdivision. The applicant is Brownstone Land, Inc., and the current property owner is Joel Beal Ward Trust. This property is generally located, it doesn't have a specific address. It's currently used for farm land. It doesn't have any structures on it. So it does not have an address, but it's generally located north of Gentle Woods Park, east of the Highway 99 and south of Hoffman Road. It is currently located inside of our urban growth boundary. And in our comprehensive plan map, it's designated for low-density residential use. The equivalent zoning that our code applies to properties with the low-density residential land designation is the RS Zone, which is also named Low Density Residential. And the applicant is proposing to keep that designation. There's no zone change that accompanies this annexation for this this specific property. The criteria which the council will need to base their decision on, again, ours specifically stated in the staff memo that is attached to the the council cover memo. Basically, those criteria look at whether or not the proposal is consistent with our comprehensive plan goals and policies that apply to urbanization and land use. We look at whether or not we can provide adequate public facilities so the water, the sewer, stormwater, parks, streets, whether or not it's inside of our growth boundary and contiguous with our city limits. There's also a set of state statutes that apply to annexations that look at consent from the property owner and electors of the area that's being annexed and what we call it, we call these a petition-initiated annexation, which we do have by the applicant's signature in this instance. Detailed findings are presented in the in the staff report that adjusts each one of these criteria. As mentioned, the property is inside of our growth boundary. So it is planned for future urbanization to meet our residential land needs. It's contiguous to the city limits on both the south and the east property boundaries. And we do have comments from Public Works and utility providers saying adequate public facilities can be provided concurrent with development. In terms of land needs, we're fortunate to have a very updated housing needs analysis that looked at our land supply and just was adopted in last year. And so just as a reminder, it did show that we have a projected shortage or deficit of low density residential land inside of our city limits over the 20-year plan horizon. So we need to annex land to meet that projected, those projected housing needs for our 20-year projected housing needs. So we have probably less than a five-year land supply right now. And the projected amount of acres that we will need to add for low-density residential is approximately 123 acres. So certainly adding these 43, 43 and a half acres will certainly help to support that need and help provide for the needed housing forecasts that we've, that we're planning for. So Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and review the application at their their last meeting and they are recommending approval of the annexation as was staff. So that was a staff recommendation. There are, there was a lot of good discussion at the Planning Commission hearing. Most of those comments actually applied to subsequent steps of development. So this is the very initial step of development for a property is to get it annexed inside the city limits and so that so that it has access to city water and sewer services. The developer, the applicant, will be required to come back to the city, Planning Commission in this case, to make application for subdivision development. And that is the time that the city will review and apply very specific criteria on the layout of the subdivision, the lots, the streets, and look at all of the impacts to stormwater and traffic as part of that. So we do give notice before that subdivision decision is made. There will be a public hearing. So there's, there's a number of steps that still need to happen before dirt can be turned for any kind of subdivision development on this property. So I just want to make sure that that's, that that is clear and understood. And we know there are wetlands and flood hazard area identified on this property. So that those natural resource issues and any impacts to those will will need to be addressed at that time. The city did receive two comment letters. One was in public comment letters, one was in your packet from Madeline Fisher that was attached. And then also we received one this afternoon from Dan Farnsworth. And I believe that was sent out, forwarded out to the council by email. Just to kind of briefly summarize his concerns. He had some concerns about traffic impacts and traffic circulation with regards to Craven Street. We do have plans for Craven Street to be extended in our transportation transportation system plan right now. With this annexation proposal, we are not approving an alignment or an extension of that road, that development for for this particular property. Again, that will come with the subdivision when we see how the other streets in the development are laid out. And we have reviewed and approved a traffic impact, we call it traffic impact analysis. So the traffic engineer will have to prepare and both the the city and ODOT will have to review and sign off on that. So the other issues from Mr. Farnsworth's letter or email speak to impacts to wildlife and wetlands and natural resource concerns. Again, those will be looked at at the time of subdivision activity. I can say that we have a number of regulations in place, one of which is our recently adopted local wetland inventory and riparian corridor protections for significant resources. So we do have some protections in place for that. There's also conservation easement in place to the south of this property where the creek flows through that will provide some additional protections for that. And then, of course, there are state and federal agencies that also get involved in Department of Land Quality, Department of State Lands, Army Corps of Engineers, all get involved in the review of any fill or impacts to wetlands and water resources. So a lot of really important. a lot of really important concerns that were raised in Mr. Farnsworth's email message, and they're just, they're premature at this point in terms of the annexation criteria that we use. Again, look at whether or not a property is contiguous inside our UGB, cannot be served by utilities, and does the owner consent to it? So we'll definitely take these into consideration, especially the, he mentioned the impacts to storm drainage, and certainly we will have a requirement condition on the subdivision that speaks to stormwater impacts that are created by the development. So do thank him for, for submitting those comments. They are a part of the record. I think that concludes my presentation. You can either ask questions of staff now, or you can hold those until after you hear the applicant's presentation. We do have, let's see, Ryan O'Brien, I believe, is the applicant, and Randy Myers on the call representing the applicant, so.
So I need council questions before we hear the applicant presentation?
Will there be enough questions after this as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Mr. O'Brien, welcome, and Mr. Myers, thank you for joining us this evening, and please go ahead. Accept you're on mute, Mr. O'Brien. There we go. Oh, no, still can't hear you. Looks like you're unmuted, but.
No, I wonder if his sound is muted on his computer.
Maybe need to give him a number to call in?
Yeah, I will send him a chat.
Got a phone number you can call in? Eight seven two two four zero three two one two.
Oops, sorry, Mayor, can you read that again? I'm typing it in the chat room. One, two, two, four.
Go, eight, seven, two, two four zero three two one two. And the access code is two one six one one nine six eight five.
See if that works. While we're waiting for Ryan O'Brien, we do have Randy Myers, did you want to do a brief introduction while we're waiting for Ryan to join us by phone?
Not quite, you're, you're talking?
Randy, we hear you, and then I think Ryan O'Brien might just have joined us.
All right, I, I'm not used to this type of system, but thank you very much, guys. I'm gonna let Ryan O'Brien take the stand if he's on.
No, can't, he was in, we had a caller, and then I think it can't see if it still have a caller.
Well, anyways, this is a project that I think the city is in need of. It's a single-family, low-density, there's a, we're annexing the property that the city needs. It's a, it's a great project. We're hoping to get connection through Craven Street, but, you know, we're, we're working with the powers that be to do that. But I'm not sure what more I can personally say. Ryan, are you there?
He is still, we still cannot get audio from him, so he's still working on it, though.
And I'm not sure how to get camera, so. I apologize for all of this.
No, that's fine. We, we get it. It's all, it's all a little strange.
Thank you for your time.
No, he called, got in at one point, but. See, in the waiting room.
Hopefully, maybe we have that, I should be able to join up.
Is that you?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
We can.
I personally the, the number and, and said you had to do a pound after which I figured this is the longer.
So if you hold up your phone a little closer, we could hear it better, and now we're not quite so. Try that.
Okay, can you hear me now? They got a bad delay.
It's probably, Mr. O'Brien. Your audio on. Because your computer also is also on, it's feeding back. So if you go to the pinwheel settings up on the top right-hand side of your screen, you see the little pinwheel?
I don't know where that is.
Video, as you look at the screen.
Yeah.
There's a little flower up in the top right-hand corner. And if you click on there, you'll see that you have a phone tab and a computer tab. And you want to turn off your computer audio. Perfect.
Does that work?
That works.
Much, thanks.
Okay, maybe it'll work now. I've never had a problem with this before. I don't know, something went wrong, so. But anyhow, we, we reviewed a lot of this information with the planning commission. It was the unanimous approval by the planning commission, which is pretty good. There wasn't really any dissension. The big issue on, on this property is that, you know, with your housing study that you, you only have forty-seven acres of land that's considered developable, and ten acres is partly vacant, which means it's probably not available for sale. I, I would suspect that most of those forty-seven acres are probably not even available for sale. We think this is the only site that actually is available for sale, and although we're annexing forty-three acres, only about twenty acres of it is actually developable, the rest, the rest of it is in floodplain and, and wetlands. We've worked with the city, and we have an access to sewer lines and water lines. Sewer line is going to go to the pump station on the west side of Highway ninety-nine, and the water line is going to go to the existing twelve-inch water line that's in Glen Woods Park. Both of those utilities will be bored underneath the, at the Middle Fork of Ash Creek. Sewer line will actually have to be bored under Highway ninety-nine. We've hired Kittleson and Associates to do our traffic study. They're actually in process of working on that right now, and they're the same engineering company that did the ma, the, the transportation master plan to the city. So they, they're real knowledgeable about the city. So we're pretty excited about this project. We, we've had quite a few responses from home builders that are interested in waiting for this project to come to be built. So I think it'll work out pretty well. I, we did get some comments from some of the neighbors at the annexation, and I think I'll probably get a chance to look at those two letters that were submitted to the city, and we'll try to reach out to those people and, you know, talk to them about what we're proposing to do. So I think that's about it. It's, it's a pretty straightforward project, and again, as Suzanne mentioned, all these issues will be addressed at the planning commission level when the subdivision application is submitted.
All right, thank you. At this time, then, is, did you have something else, sorry?
No, I'm finished with my presentation, yes.
Great. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. So at this point, we take a, any testimony from persons in favor of this application. Is there anyone who would like to comment in favor of the application? Not seeing anything. Phyllis, do you have any comments or anyone indicating they want to speak?
I do not.
Okay. And then persons in opposition, if we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application. We will take those comments now. Now, see anyone identifying in opposition? All right, anyone else who would like to speak about this application?
Mayor, I see that, that the microphone for caller number six here has lit up. Is that someone we need to chat?
That's Mr. O'Brien, so he, he's. Maybe you can mute on your phone. Mr. O'Brien, so that, that we're not hearing your phone background? If you can mute actually on your phone. So no other public comment, either in favor or against? I don't see anyone to provide additional testimony or comments. So we are at an opportunity for questions by the council. If you'd have questions, Councilor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is regarding the, the parcel that was designated as, as open space in, in environmental trust. I, I do see that this was, that this was addressed on the Planning Commission level, but because this has been spoken about in, in council previous, I'd like some clarification of where that parcel is, and clarification that this is not indeed the same parcel that was designated as open space. Is that correct?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Oh, and perhaps actually Suzanne Duffner perhaps would be best to, best suited to answer that. I should have been more direct in my, my question, my apologies.
Yep, I will see if I can't answer that. So there were some maps that were included in your voluminous staff report. They were the longer ones. And one, the first one is a map of the assessor map that says annexation boundary with an arrow and highlighting the site. So the, the site is highlighted in a greenish-blue boundary, and that's tax lot eleven hundred. That's the forty-five point four five acres that includes the Highway ninety-nine right away adjacent to the property. It's part eleven, tax lot eleven hundred is part of a larger parcel that goes south of Middle Fork Creek, has the little lake or jog that goes next to, or near General Woods Park. So, yeah, so the conservation easement is on the piece that's already or at least a portion of it is inside the, the city limits on tax lots twelve oh six. So the applicant or the property owner also owns twelve oh six, the thirteen point four six acre piece next to General Woods Park, but that's already inside of our, our city. And so it's not part of the annexation application, but will be considered as part of the future subdivision development. I believe the applicant is proposing a future zone change on a portion of that, that's currently zoned public. So again, not the subject of tonight's application, but, but you're correct in that there are kind of two pieces side by side. Most of the conservation easement is on the parcel that's already inside of the, the city limits. I don't, did that, were you able to kind of see that on the map? I'm sorry, you don't have a visual screen for that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Duffner. I, I have the, the, the map that you're referring to in front of me here, and that's, that's a great, a great amount of clarity there. My, my follow-up question to that is that, you know, this, this comfort, conservation easement separates this parcel from the bulk of the rest of the city. Will that cause any issues in, in bringing services to this parcel?
It presents a challenge in terms of being able to cross it for utilities. So I believe that's one of the issues that the applicant is working through. But I, I don't have any further updates on that at this point, but certainly as part of a future subdivision development application, we will, they will have to have that issue resolved. And so we've done some preliminary planning on, on how, engineering on how that can be done, but the, the specifics of how that gets worked out, again, will be with that future subdivision, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Carey, and then Counselor Sharma?
Just a quick one. I, in, in the materials, there was reference to a land being donated to the city. Would that be in the form of parks? Would that come as some of that the undevelopable land? Not, not critically important, but I'm just curious. I'm not sure whether that's Ryan or whether that's Suzanne.
I can start, and then I'll turn it over to the applicant to respond more specifically. So we, we do not have a, a specific site plan that's being adopted as part of this to identify that, but yes, it's my understanding it would be some of that undevelopable land in the flood and the, the wetland areas. So the city staff who are Public Works and our parks have not committed to, I mean, we'll have to evaluate that in terms of do we have the, the capacity to maintain that, and that, does that meet our, our park needs? But certainly, we are looking for opportunity. We know we have a need for some additional parkland in this area of town. Be great to see that expand into the General Woods Park, and we also know from our parks master plans, which was recently updated, that there's a community desire for more parks. Trails are trails that connect to parks and paths for pedestrians and bicyclists. So try to put this very common to put those up next to streams or riparian areas. So we'll be looking at how to develop some kind of amenity like that for this, for this development. And then I'll think Ryan may have some comments that you'd like to speak to on that.
Yeah, I think I can basically say that all the land that is not developed in lots, all the wetlands and floodplain areas, well, all, all of that land is, we plan to dedicate to the city. And also a, a pretty good section of land on the very south end of our property, which is the tax lot twelve oh six, that's next to the Glenwood, Glen Woods Park, there'll be, we'll, we'll expand the Glen Woods Park. And then we expect that, we would like to have trails throughout the entire area so that people can walk from the park to the open space areas. And that's, so that's what we're planning on doing.
Great, thank you. And Counselor Sharma?
Thank you. Um, so as I understand it, and, and please, I hope you will forgive me if I ask a question that's already been addressed, because I couldn't really understand, I mean.
because I couldn't really understand, I mean, couldn't hear, can't see your lips moving. So I'm sorry about that with the mask and everything. But this is, the site is about forty-three acres in change and you think about half of that will be developed? Is that, okay. And then, um, if the typical single-family house lot is 5,000 square feet, I'm sorry, I can't do the math in my head right now. How, about how many houses would that be?
Well, it all depends on what happens on the wetlands and the floodplain, but it could be a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, somewhere in that range. Maybe even up to a hundred and fifty. It just depends on where we end up building, but, um, we don't know exactly yet. But, um, we're, we're definitely planning on single-family detached houses.
Okay, and then, um.
No, no attached.
No attached?
No, wouldn't.
So this was the proposed.
I was gonna say, the home builders we talked, we're talking to all feel that, uh, the best development option on this property is detached housing, single-family housing.
Okay, so then it will be, the proposed zoning is low-density residential?
Yes.
Okay, and as I understand it, um, single-family homes on a 5,000 square foot lot are hardly ever affordable for people who are having a kind of a hard go at life. Um, do we have any options for, um, changing that zoning to make it mixed residential, to put in a few buildings that might be affordable for, say, a young family or a retired person to, to buy?
Well, that's something we can definitely consider. Um, but like I said, so far the builders have all said they want to do single-family detached. I know on the, on the west side of highway 99, you have a lot of vacant land on that side, and that does have a lot of higher density. So, um, but that's something we can definitely talk to the builders about.
Okay.
Yeah.
And to that as well, um, with the recent House bill that's passed, um, we, the city will have to amend our code to allow duplexes wherever single-family is allowed. So, um, there, there will be a change, um, we're coming to our code to allow duplex in a single fam- a low-density, single-family zone. So that's one opportunity, um, to, to provide some more affordable housing options in that zone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe not. I'm not sure that that was quite loud enough.
Oh.
Did, did you under, did you get that, Counselor Sharma?
There's some, some sort of proposed changes to the zoning code coming up.
Well, it's actually mandated by state law. It's House Bill 2001 that says, uh, the cities have to allow, uh, duplex, uh, housing in single-family zoned, uh, areas.
Okay, thank, I, I remember that now. Thank you, Lane. Okay, thank you.
Oh, great. Other questions? All right, uh, seeing none, I will close this hearing. Um, and I think that's all we get at this point. Um, so we do have a proposed motion about how to proceed with this matter, and I would entertain that motion at this time or an alternative.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move, uh, to approve annexation 20 dash zero one and direct staff to prepare an ordinance to adopt, uh, annexation 20 dash zero one.
Thank you, Counselor Carey.
Second.
And a second by Counselor Belts, thank you very much. And, uh, do we need a roll call on this?
No, just a voice vote?
Roll call will come next week, or next meeting with the, with the ordinance.
Perfect, thank you. We will, uh, now I will ask, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? We have a unanimous approval and look forward again to the, um, resolution to come in the future. So, thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate your decision. Okay, we'll see ya.
All right. All right, we have one more order of business in our regular meeting before the Urban Renewal Agency convenes. And this will be another hearing, actually, because it is, and, um, to adopt a supplemental budget. Again, things that we did not foresee when we did our original budgeting this year. And so I will, um, open the hearing and ask for a staff report from our finance director, Janet Shinard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, counselors. Um, I have prepared a report, which you will see, uh, before you, and I'm actually kind of excited to be doing something like this in the Economic Development Fund, which as most of you know, has been fairly, um, quiet since 2014, when the seed money from the sale of, uh, the building on 169 Broad Street, our old recreation building, uh, occurred. Those monies have been sitting in there with, uh, with the hope and the dream that we can start to do some economic development work. And while this so far has not been, um, really the economic development work, I think we hope to do in the sense that we are using our, our COVID, uh, grant money to try and, um, get some things back on track economically. Uh, one of the reasons that I'm bringing this rather complicated, um, economic development, uh, supplemental budget to you is that not only do I want to, um, adopt the monies that we are planning to spend to support the community, uh, with our CRF funds, but also, uh, continue to do some of the work that we had hoped to do originally. And so we have actually, as of, uh, the October month-end report, spent about ninety-five percent of our appropriations that we had already adopted. So it's kind of critical that we put some more appropriations in place since we have the revenue to backstop them. So, um, I guess the upshot is we have, uh, we are not going to affect the fund balance per se with the supplemental budget. We have the resources that fully backstop them. I am asking in addition, uh, to, um, also appropriate for the Business Oregon Grant, um, that was also related to the COVID-19, um, work, and also an $1,180 grant from the Ford Foundation, uh, which, uh, Ms. Duffner was, uh, clever enough to get, uh, towards our Main Street program activities. Uh, so all of those pieces are one part of the puzzle. And then the remainder is, um, I would also like at this time, rather than coming back to later, if we are able to keep moving forward on this, to also, um, appropriate the future reserves, and that is one of the reasons that this requires a supplemental budget, uh, this action. And then also the contingencies. I don't honestly anticipate that we will spend all of the reserves and contingencies. However, um, it, it is at this time kind of an unknown what we will do, and we want to have the flexibility, I believe. And that is my recommendation to you. So, um, with that, I would take questions and also if the public hearing proceeds, and there are any comments.
Yes, any questions? Um, I, and I have one, and that is about appropriating the future reserves, because in my, in my mind, that's different from contingencies. And if we had put it in as a, an actual future reserve, I wasn't sure we could appropriate it.
That's a, that's a great question, Madam Mayor. So essentially, the contingency is different. The contingency is, is just an appropriations transfer, and, and we can do that without a supplemental budget, as long as it's less than fifteen percent of appropriations, which this is. I've rolled that into the supplemental budget. But, um, I have, I did this last year, you may recall, um, as well, uh, was able to, to use, um, some future reserves as a supplemental budget. Um, and that was approved by, uh, the state of Oregon, um, under Oregon budget law. That, that is the only way that you can access future reserves is through a supplemental budget. And so they weren't appropriated in the beginning, which is why we have to do it that way. It's, it's, it is a resource that we can use.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Janet? The council, yes, Counselor Carey.
Um, this, um, I find this very confusing, that, that the, uh, some of the, the detailed numbers are actually appeared for the first time in the, in the resolution. And, you know, the, the, uh, I mean, and thank you for your explanation, because that, that provided, uh, some of that, uh, you know, some clarity. But, um, I, I'm, I'm kind of confused by the whole thing. I'll just have to tell you.
Well, what can I offer to clarify? I know that it is confusing when you do a supplemental budget, because you have, you have the explanation. The top section of the numbers in the resolution explains where the resources are coming from and how much we're increasing our appropriations. So you'll see that the resources add up to the hundred and thirty-three, three eighty-nine that I'm requesting in additional appropriations. If you add that one hundred and thirty-three, three eighty-nine to our existing appropriations, that's how you get the one hundred and eighty-eight, eight eighty-nine. And so for that, you have to refer back to the original resolution. Um, but that's how that number is derived. And that tells you essentially now, uh, we have the ability to spend up to a hundred and eighty-eight, um, thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars in the Economic Development Fund. If we do that, um, we will just have whatever we had in our beginning, uh, balance, if that wasn't using up all of our, of beginning reserves anyway. So we may, this would essentially spend it down to zero. But again, I don't anticipate that that will be the case, but this gives us the flexibility to do that if we need to do that for the purposes that this fund was established.
Yeah, kind of wonky, but budget law, John, I, I get that. You don't, you're right, the numbers don't show up. And then all of a sudden, there's this weird number of one eighty-eight, eighty-nine, but that is the total appropriation for the fund if you look back at what we did during budget season, so.
I, I, I know, and, and I'm, and I understand and I appreciate the complexity of budget law. I understand that I don't understand it. Uh, but, but, uh, and, and I believe this, you know, as you've described it, Janet, I'm on side. I just don't get the presentation of that. I don't, I, I, I can't, I can't make the, the, um, you know, we got three sections down at the bottom, which, you know, we're told that that all rolls up to one eighty-eight. That ought to be in the staff report, um, in my opinion. Um, anyway, enough, enough of my ignorant.
That, no, that's good feedback. And I, in future supplemental budgets, which I hope we won't have many of, and as you know, we haven't in the past, I can put a table into the staff report. I aired on the side of keeping it to a one-page staff report, but I can absolutely add a, a more, uh, more simplified table that will help reduce the complexity.
Yep, I, I think that would be great. Other questions or comments for Janet? All right, and this is a public hearing, so there's still no one in the room to publicly comment on this supplemental budget. And is there anyone on the call who would like to comment on the supplemental budget?
I see nobody to comment.
Thank you, Phyllis, nor do I. So I will close the hearing. And again, we have a proposed motion on the supplemental budget, and I would entertain that motion.
I move to adopt a supplemental budget and approve transferring contingency appropriations for fiscal year 21 and direct the finance director to make appropriate entries.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez for the motion, and Counselor Silvernagle for the second. And this would be resolution number nineteen eleven, a resolution to authorize the supplemental budget in the Economic Development Fund of grant monies for unforeseen costs related to the economic impacts of COVID-19 in the Monmouth community. And, uh, we will take a roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Sharma?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. So Janet will make those entries, and we will, next time we see a finance report, we'll include those numbers. So, thank you very much. Uh, and at this point, um, if there are any council comments, I'll take those, uh, before we adjourn, maybe take a brief break and reconvene. Anything for council? Comments, announcements? We have a virtual tree lighting this year. Um, so that information was in your packet with the, uh, Making Spirits Bright materials, but, uh, that is, I think, this Friday. And, um, the, uh, Mayor of Independence and I filmed our annual comments to the community on a nice sunny day, uh, in October. And so it's not quite the festive evening, but, uh, the university does have some great things still planned for us and ways for us to celebrate the kickoff to the holidays as a community. So that's one thing to look forward to. John?
Uh, it was in our packet, and, and you, you, you mentioned the, uh, sort of obliquely, the, um, the Artist's Sunday. And, um, I was hoping to get that web address out for those that might be listening. It's artists, plural, artistsunday.com. You can go on there and you can select your locale and, um, you know, pull the, uh, participating artists. So, um, anyway, that, that bit of linkage there would be helpful for some, perhaps.
Yes, thank you for that. Yes, it is weird. It does have two S's in the middle. So do that, and you will see that the city of Monmouth is actually listed as a sponsor. Um, and thanks to Phyllis, she found this information out. So we listed ourselves as a sponsor. That was at no cost to us, but it does allow us to, um, promote and sponsor a lot of the really amazing artists in our community. So thank you, John, for that. And if there's nothing else, I would accept the motion to adjourn our business meeting.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you, Darren. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And, um, I have eight twenty-one. If we could, um, take a few moments for a break, we will reconvene at eight twenty-nine, um, as the Urban Renewal Agency. So, thanks all very much. We'll take a few minute break here. All right, we will gather folks together. Oh. I never thought about. Do we invite the counselors to be into executive session? We can have. All right. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, November 17th meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. We have a couple of items of business, including a supplemental budget. And after that, we will adjourn to executive session. It will meet, we will meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transactions. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192662E, Real Property Transaction, which allows the agency to meet an executive session. Representative of the news media designated staff or other person shall be allowed to attend. All other members of the audience or call would be asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media, don't see any here, would be able to report on the general subject of the session, but not any of the deliberations. No decision may be made in executive session at the end of executive session. We will return to open session and it is not anticipated that actually this evening. Laurel, is that Zoe we were talking to or?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know my mic was on. I was getting ready for the roll.
That's okay. So we, we will do that afterwards. And I, tonight, Elaine, unless you tell me that's not acceptable, I would like to invite our council candidates into executive session to hear this information, if that's okay.
Sure. The executive session does not prohibit attendance by other than the council. It just means that you have control of who attends and if you want to include the, the counselor elects, you can certainly do that.
Thank you. If, since the three of them are on this call, if they would like to attend with us, we would be glad to have them join. So. All right. So with that, we will take the roll call, please, Phyllis.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Dr. Sharma.
Here.
Mr. Schinkel.
Here.
Mr. Silbernagle.
Here.
Ms. Belts.
Here.
Ms. Kuntz.
I am here as well. And we again, don't have anyone showing up for citizen comments. Do you have anyone, Phyllis, who'd like to present comments to the Urban Renewal Agency?
I do not.
Thank you. So our first item of business is the consent calendar. We did have a meeting on October 6th and the minutes were included in your packet. I would entertain a motion to approve those or corrections or additions.
Move to approve the minutes of the Urban Renewal Agency meeting from October the 6th, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Belts. And was that a second, Mr. Lopez?
I will have a second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, so again, time for the Urban Renewal Agency's Finance Director, who also happens to be Janet Chenard, to present another budget for us. And so this is a supplemental budget again, so I will open the hearing.
Thank you again, Chair Kuntz and misters and misses and doctors. Bored, I guess. I am bringing to you, as you know, we did a $4 million loan fairly recently. And that, those monies can actually be expended without a supplemental budget. But for, for financial reporting purposes, it is much more streamlined to go ahead and, and make it transparent to the readers of the budget that we are adopting those in order to spend them because we do hope to spend close to 2 million of them in fiscal 21. However, if things move as fast as we hope in some quarters, we may spend all of the 4 million. So I am requesting the full 4 million be appropriated, again with the expectation that we may carry some of it over to a future year. In addition to that, because we are doing a number of projects that weren't originally contemplated when we set this budget in place, we had a fairly conservative budget established. In fact, the prior interim city manager, Olson, said that in retrospect, he wished he had gone ahead and had us appropriate the reserves and contingency amounts because that's what he has done in his former life. But now I have an opportunity to do that. And so I'm hoping with my recommendation that you will again do that. And so that will bring to Counselor Carey's point, or I mean, Mr. Carey's point, when he was a counselor in the previous meeting. Again, it looks fairly complex in the, in the table in the resolution. But the nice thing about it is that essentially the 807,340 that you see in your budget document, and that's always a good resource to look at. That is how much we had appropriated plus the future reserves and contingencies for the year. And so the simple add back is the 4 million for the loan that we did. And that 4 million will also, as you know, pay for our services and fees associated with doing the bank loan. And so I knew that we would have a higher materials and services budget need. And additionally, we're doing a fair amount of work with consultants, as you know, on design of, of the IOFF building and a variety of other urban renewal consultants that we have hired. So the numbers, I will admit, in the materials and services and capital outlay category are somewhat arbitrary in the sense that I don't know how much we'll end up spending exactly in the materials and services. So I hope not to have to come back to you with a transfer of appropriations at a future meeting. But I'm going to hold that out there as a possibility if, if we need, you know, if we end up doing more design work or consulting work than we do actual construction work for some of the projects that we have contemplated, those categories may shift. We don't have a department in the Urban Renewal District. We have, we have to appropriate by category. So, so all of that to say, I'm, I'm hoping that 300,000, which takes the materials and services budget, which we had previously, which totaled 109,200 and adds it to the 190,800 that you see before you in the supplemental budget to come up with 300,000. And then the capital outlay is simply the remainder of that. Debt service actually does include the debt service on the amphitheater as well as the new debt service. There is one debt service payment this fiscal year that was not previously contemplated. So that's why your debt service number is larger. Special payments is the same as what we had originally envisioned. It is towards an intratie project in the water fund as well as some spending on economic, or urban renewal, I should say, support, whether it's by Suzanne or the new associate planner position. But that allows us to supplement up to 50% of, of the salary that we had originally envisioned in the, in the budget. So I hope that's not more information than you cared to know, but that's what I would explain. And then from the public hearing standpoint, again, if there's any comments for a public hearing or if there's any questions from the board, I would be interested in responding.
All right. Questions or comments from agency board members for Janet?
Madam Chair, I, I just, and I don't want to be redundant, but once again, the detail is in the actual ordinance. The generalities are in the staff report and it ought to be almost reverse of that as far as I'm concerned. It's hard, it's hard to grasp exactly what we're doing if I read the staff report and then look at the resolution. That said, I believe that this was the right way to go. I've been able to win one up from it to feel comfortable, but just, that's just my take.
Perfect. Other questions or comments? And do we have any public comment on the supplemental budget, Phyllis, for the Urban Renewal Agency?
We do not that I know of.
All right. All right. Seeing no additional questions, there is a proposed motion on a resolution by the Urban Renewal Agency. Byron.
I move we adopt a supplemental budget and approve transferring contingency appropriation for FY21 and direct the finance director to make appropriate entries.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Schinkel and seconded by Mr. Silbernagle. And this would be resolution number 39, a resolution adopting a supplementary budget and transferring contingencies for fiscal year 21, directing the finance director to make appropriate entries. And a roll call, please, Phyllis.
Mr. Carey.
Hi.
Mr. Schinkel.
Yes.
Ms. Belts.
Yes.
Mr. Silbernagle.
Hi.
Ms. Kuntz.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Hi.
Dr. Sharma.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that unanimous vote. Thank you, Janet, for that work. And like you say, if, if we move things around again a little bit between now and June, we'll see that back in front of us. At this time, I will move into executive session, again pursuant to ORS 192662E and invite Suzanne to stay with us. Lane, Marty will be with us as well. And what's up? Janet can stay. We have to talk about money stuff. And then our counselor elects will join us. And Zach. We will stop the streaming now. We're not anticipated to come back and make. Um, we will stop the streaming now. We're not anticipated to come back and make a decision. So we're going to wait a moment while Zach closes down the live stream on YouTube.